It is six thirty, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. First thing on the agenda this evening is review and approval of the minutes from the prior meeting. If anybody has any additions or corrections, if they'd be kind enough to-
Six thirty o'clock. Where does that come from?
The minutes of the previous meeting. May or be two thousand and nineteen.
This is, uh-
No, no, no.
That was interesting. All of a sudden, boom!
And one was out. Back to the minutes, if anybody has any additions or corrections, if they'd be kind enough to give them to Linda.
Just a minor kind of table there, the last two sentences, maybe the subject for Ben Cole, the second to last sentence, probably have the word "be" appropriate, I had in there, and then "seh" engineering, a lot of times will get autocorrected.
Oh, God, we've tried it twice!
She engineered it.
We've tried it twice!
It's it. That's a hard one.
Yeah, we've tried it twice.
That's why mine doesn't autocorrect, I haven't put it almost, didn't do it though.
If there are not any other additions or corrections, that would be our motion to approve.
I'll approve the minutes.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion in the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes have been approved. Next up, we've got a public hearing, Bigelow Voight, Perry Willow, fourth final flat.
You clean it before, it was approved in three seventeen, but it's not recorded in the twelve month period that they have to record it, so it's back to be approved again. Um, just to make sure we had crossed all our Ts and dotted all our Is, we scheduled it as a public hearing period.
With that said, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, if anybody has any thoughts you'd like to share, if they're kind enough to come to the podium and give your name and address.
Tony Bigelow, twelve ten Sixteenth Street, Northeast Cassin. Yeah, we got this approved, yeah, a year and a half, year ago, um, found out we needed more soil corrections than we thought we'd do, came back to the city, got some tip money, you guys probably know that. Um, nothing's changed on the plan at all, same, same number of lots, thirteen townhomes, nine patio homes. Two private streets, the servants, not a lot of public infrastructure, but precise watering and sewer.
And if there's any questions, I can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Sayes and Rafflin, fifteen oh three Second Street Northwest. Tony, I was just kind of wondering what the amendment process involves, if you could comment on that a little bit with the soil and how that'll work.
Sure, be glad. Well, there, there's really no amendment, the flat stays exactly the same, and then dirt work has nothing to do with streets, it has to do with the foundation of the house to sit on. We had extra deep organic soils on both sites, both halves, so we gotta excavate that out, pack it back in with good clays, with testing from engineers, then we feel safe to go ahead and build homes on that. You know, it had nothing to do with any other amendments.
Sure.
It was a business decision at the, at the time.
Okay, yeah, that clears it up, thank you.
Okay.
What's the timing on that?
We're looking to start, uh, probably early August, I mean, right now, uh, we have a bid out, I'm working on getting, um, a line of credit or a irrevocable letter of credit for the city, either that or we may go with a performance bond, it's just a normal, normal thing, but everything else is in place for wreckage bill.
Quick question, Jeremy Kramer-
Yeah, Jeremy Kramer.
Fifteen oh five Second Street, so I just had a question last time, I think, is there still just the one entrance on Second Street into, where, I think there's like thirteen homes planned?
Yep.
My only concern with that is, with that, there's a lot of kids and families on that road, and that gravel road gets beat up really bad. I know it's partially the county and then partially the city, if there's any way to like get that maybe blacktop or if there's another exit, just 'cause there's gonna be a lot of people going in and out as their only entrance and exit to that spot.
Probably a question outside the scope of the planning and going board, but you do have a couple city council members here that-
Something we'd like to do, but it's just not in the works right now.
That's a township road, isn't it?
Yep.
Is it a full township road or is it partial city, partial township?
It's full township, isn't it?
I think it's half.
I think it's like, split down the middle, but they maintain that one and then we maintain another one.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, our concern just was that, it, it was so beat up this year, um, and again, rough, rough winter and rough spring, it's just, our concern would be is if it continues to be like that down the, down the road here and in the future years is, you know, that traffic coming out, um, out of this subdivision, they're gonna wanna come down our road, you know, and we're at, and that's a lot of extra vehicle traffic, and that's where we're, you know, coming to the city council and, and the township discussing the possibility of, you know, ex, you know, blacktopping a certain length, I, I don't know how that works, if it involves the whole thing, you know, obviously that's beyond what I know.
Generally, the condition is let's go and drive the need to repair and replace, so, yeah, the more traffic gets on, it's gonna drive that demand.
Okay, that's good to know.
One quick question, last question on it.
Go ahead.
The pond that's back there, is there any plan for anything with that retention pond?
Well, once we're done with this project, then that pond will be turned over to the city.
Oh.
So, the city generally wants a home and maintain the pond, yeah.
And so the patio homes will be, was the old genuine turkey, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Patrick Mulroney, fourteen oh four Second Street, um, so I have a preliminary plan that shows ten patio homes on it now, and, uh, I'll show an older grading plan that had nine, would you just clarify if now you're putting ten patio homes?
No, it would be closer to the grading plan, it's nine.
Yeah, so you might have here-
So this is what Linda just sent me, and it had ten on it, this is the grading plan.
On the preliminary plot, it does have ten.
Yeah, we got rid of one unit, so there'll be nine here now.
And they'll just still go on in.
Yeah, this will be exactly the same.
And that's the one that you guys have been talking with as far as-
Yeah, we're just, yeah, with this, and this gravel road we're talking about, yeah.
So on this plan, you've got them over further, and then this is the one you're gonna go with, you're actually gonna move them closer to the outlot B?
Correct. No, they're staying the same.
Does this shows this one over more with the outlot B grading than this one does not?
Well, I think what you're, the grading plan can be confusing, I don't think we're showing the exact property lines on here, you know, she got shaded gray, well, just to be clear, we're one.
Gray is on utilities, huh?
Yeah, so actually, this outlot got a little bigger between the ponds, so it actually shifted a little bit to the east.
Yeah, so there's still gonna be the outlot D?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification. Be glad, thank you.
The last question I just asked for you was, you know, there's a lot of vegetation and growth in there, I mean, is all that gonna go, will some of those trees stay, you know, I mean, depending obviously where the homes will sit?
Yeah, I mean, it depends on what kind of trees there are, if there's scrub trees, probably behooves to get rid of them now when we're doing the construction, so the city's not dealing with the flux or, you know, some unruly trees, whatever is in there.
Okay.
I'd have to look, I'd, but anything on the outlot surround that's not being built into buildings, have to keep the trees in, that's a matter of-
Okay, I mean, they're great for a little sound barrier from, from the road there, so.
Okay, perfect.
No, thanks.
Thank you. Which one did you, which one did you, it's the top one. That's the older one, but not.
Any other questions, comments? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing then, thank you all, I'm good, okay, thank you. Thank you, Tony, for answering questions. Gentlemen, any comments on the side?
Didn't hear anything that changes what was previously approved.
Gentlemen?
Nope.
Now, I would be looking for a motion.
Some move.
Motion in the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Plan is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Yeah, sure.
Thanks. We'll see you.
Next item on our agenda, public hearing, Mr. Sheldon Orkelson requests for a review.
And this is, um, you had requested, uh, a legal opinion on this to be attorney on them, so that's included in your package.
We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, if anybody has any comments they'd like to make, same as before, give us your name and address, please.
Olivia Orkelson, one, two, zero, zero, last name, see you.
They're pretty timed, and if there's any questions, we'll just step out of the way and anybody can ask. Anybody else have anything?
Matt Bell from General Four, first place northwest, um, I read through this and I really have no doubt that Sheldon and his family are gonna be responsible neighbors and take care of horses and stuff, my fear is more long lines, what happens if Sheldon sells and he's out of there, somebody moves in, they start planting crops, start spreading fertilizer, or maybe they bring in hogs instead of horses, it just might not be, they might not be as good of neighbors as Sheldon has, so that's really my concern, my fear. So, and the question would be, I know the rezone goes up property, does the conditional use, both property is up, so, that, that would be my fear.
Anyone else, anyone else contribute? If not, I will close the public hearing, thank you.
Can a conditional use permit only be with the president's owner, or is there something needs to be done?
I don't think the rezone in and of itself allows for livestock.
Only horses?
Well, if you look at the conditional use permit for the Ag rezone, the Ag district, you gotta have a conditional use permit for keeping of horses and livestock, so I don't interpret the Ag rezone in and of itself adequate enough to go into some sort of commercial farming or something. Somebody else has it, probably will want to wager an opinion on it.
It's one of the conditions is that it is limited to horses only.
Maybe we can manage that within the scope of the conditional use.
Yeah.
But there's, there's two public hearings, one for a reason, I don't think the rezone in and of itself would allow you to raise livestock on that way. Would allow you to field crops.
So you, on the rezone, um, the planning commission shall hold a public hearing and maintain the application for further investigation necessary, or the commission shall recommend to the council one of three actions, approval, conditional approval, or denial, so you may add a condition to the rezone.
But if we rezone the property, we can't place a condition on it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's squarely outlined within the scope of the-
Rezoning?
Rezoning.
So you could rezone it with the condition that it is for the keeping of horses.
You can rezone it in part.
It can be a conditional approval, yeah.
So does that mean if there's no longer horses there, that it reverts back, or can only-
If it's not used for horses within twelve months, you could consider a revocation of the following conditional use permit.
Teresa, who would be responsible for keeping track of that?
That's what I was just gonna ask.
Great minds and all that.
Yeah, I guess the zoning administrator.
I mean, does Sheldon have to report that he's no longer having horses, can that be part of a conditional use?
It could be, it could be so.
I think even with the condition, the permitted uses in the Ag still apply. The condition would be in addition to what is already permitted in the Ag. Which lists forestry, farming, doesn't list any other livestock.
Did you put a condition in the conditional use permit that revokes the rezoning in the Ag?
Anything beyond horses, or-
But it does say cue, keeping of horses and livestock.
And we can limit that on the conditional use permit, just horses.
Yeah, I, I have no issue with this whole thing, because he has the railroad on the south, swamp on the west, um, well, I mean, it is wetland, okay, we'll call it wetland, wetland on the west.
Ultimately, what I'd follow it up by one word, I'd call it a swamp too.
Hard repair on the east, tis home on the north, so it is confined area. My only issue is down the road, if you go to sell it, that, that's where, like you said, that's where my issue comes. It, it's the perfect location, it isn't hampered by anyone else, um, nobody can build behind you, nobody's gonna build around you, just as long as we can somehow contain it, so if you sell, it's restricted and stays restricted.
Right, and the, kind of, what I think is a goal for this is, let's say, reuse it for that for right now, um, we need the green space, but in order to get, what we're asking for is falling into an Ag function of the zoning, and we can put, I guess, I, I'm looking at it as, you know, restriction wise, I mean, what are we gonna do, we had talked about making all that out in there, um, green space, which basically kind of falls under our Ag part.
Is that-
We talked about-
Right, well, the conditional use permit does show portion of your parcel have open space, I believe, that way, how it, yeah, how it's shown, so the conditional use permit, or the future land use map, um, would fit that.
Right, yeah, that was kind of my point around about, that's what we're kind of looking at doing, you know, we wanted, with, with cop plans, that's what we wanna key on that part of it.
Is the open space.
Yeah.
Our current zoning ordinance is where the Ag would come in.
Right. So as the city attorney stated, she suggested it being surveyed and split, so that portion and that portion only is Ag, plus the building would be on that portion.
Yeah, we'd have to put a building back onto the Ag part.
Right, would that be under the conditions?
Okay. Then we would, Melanie has suggested, you know, as far as that, making it, um, well, I guess, what, what did she say in there, it was, uh, to do a survey on it, you know, to make sure that we knew exactly where the stuff is placed.
The Ag, yeah, the Ag boundaries are, yeah, yeah.
Which you would agree to do too, you know, and that's, that's a fair thing to do, you know, exactly where boundaries are.
What we don't wanna muddle in, in this discussion is what we can do in the rezone versus what we do in the conditional use permit, and I think some of this discussion is starting to get muddled a bit.
Right. So, trying to stay focused on the rezone component. Gentlemen, is there any specific commentary and specific thoughts?
I have no issue with rezoning.
Would that say I have a promotion, please?
So a motion to approve the rezone request with the condition that the property be appropriately surveyed and boundaries defined, and the limit to the housing of equine.
Very obvious, right?
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, I'm convinced.
And forgive me, we've gotta go through the same process again with the conditional use permit, next item on the agenda, Teresa, any comments before, public hearing?
No, yeah, I think your attorney-
Kind of woven into the prior conversation. With that said, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, specific to the conditional use permit for Sheldon Orkelson, Orkelson property, if anybody has any thoughts or comments, again, if they're kind enough to come to the podium.
Well, what we've done, and we filled out all the sheets and stuff on that, no conditional use permit, we still, I think everybody got a map too, that, you know, what it, what we were thinking, there is one thing on that map that I do wanna, I was just telling Matt about that too, there's a little dark spot, there's something that came up to the side of the existing commercial building, and that's, we couldn't do that, it just was still on that map right since it, to the city.
Yeah.
So, um, just, just so everybody's on that, same thing, just wanna keep this back, way back, you know, and back to everything where the trees are and stuff like that, so. There are some numbers on there too, I don't know, my printer was in a hurry and I couldn't really make them out, but it kind of gives an idea of, uh, feet to other residences and things like that, so, how far from the road it is.
At these points, these numbers don't mean anything until the survey is completed.
Right, and they should-
Gives you a suggestion.
Yeah, exactly, and that's where I think that the survey would be, you know, that's gonna pinpoint it.
Yeah.
And we say, are probably within a few feet, but, you know, we wanna be exact, you know, because we'd be putting fences on it.
Right.
So I want that right on the money, I only want a fence once.
Olivia, if anybody has any comments, we'll step back. Any other comments anyone would like to share? If not, I will go ahead and close the public hearing, thank you.
It's been a while since I've had to address fencing, but in our ordinance, do we still have that the property line so maintain most sites and fence?
Yeah.
Okay, so when we talk about fencing, it has to be off your lot line, so you may maintain most sites.
Right, without having to go on someone else's property.
Right, so how would that affect with the railroad, railroads are pretty strict about what you can step foot on there broadly.
So would we- Well, wherever the lot line is for the Ag boundaries, give yourself five feet so you can mow before, you know, outside your fence, so you stay on your property.
You have plenty there because there's gonna be right of way with the, with the railroad, so, but it's still technically your property, you'd be able to, because you're not gonna fence right up to the right of way probably, or be very, pretty close to it.
Yeah, like you'd still a little ways anyway.
But you'd still probably have, I guess, twenty five feet, um, you know, but you'd have to maintain from your property line and from your own, so.
So, as far as fencing goes, we would wanna create a little buffer zone so that we can maintain it, um, so we could go how close, you was suggested, like five feet or more with?
Whatever, yeah, the over width is basically what you need, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to release that.
Or more.
I mean, whatever.
Yeah, fresh water.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
We wackery. Any thoughts on what type of fence you want, what answer?
Yeah, in the back.
And on the outside.
Yeah, we're still looking at some different types of fencing, but a good fence, um, and across the front, you know, in the back part, um, there's, there's several different ones, we had, I didn't bring the photos of those we had in the last, but, you know, the first thing, of course, is, you know, as far as a good quality fence, um, not a, a little electric fence, you know, nothing like that, but, you know, probably a, I would say, six foot fence along the back with, you know, you can't use barbed wire or anything like that, but that would be not a solid fence, I mean, is that centered into anything as far as our fencing restrictions or anything? So, but yeah, good, it's gonna be a heavy, actually, something, it's not gonna, a deer's not gonna run through it and break it, because we do have a few of those back there too that live on the other side. And across the front, you know, something that has some decorative to it, you know, something that's aesthetically pleasing, you know, so, I like, there's some that are white, you know, that gives it kind of a easy look, pretty look, and then there's some with, uh, more of a height in between, you know, something that's heavy and stuff like that, there's, there's several ones that we'd be more willing to narrow that down in our research and have that okay too, we would encourage that. Something Matt likes to look at too.
Yeah, I would say, we have to look at it too, so.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, make good night, Olivia.
Yeah.
We gotta go to our team.
Olivia's still, she's a little-
She gets the paint job.
Yeah, 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 but, yeah, something along that line, definitely wouldn't, you know, obtain approval on that too, we would, we would encourage that for feedback.
I have no opinion on the type of fence, uh, I'm more concerned about the quality and the permanency of the fence and the security of the fence, so whatever you can do to maintain those three conditions, quality, permanency, and, and security, then I'm, I'm good with, with that. The other conditions is that we should limit it to one acre per animal unit, and the other condition is that the outbuilding needs to be within the Ag boundary. And the other condition is that the old building needs to be within the egg boundary.
Do we want to look at the conditions for this permit for family living?
I, I don't have an opinion on whether the other...
I mean, I would, I would think if we restricted it specifically to horses, I, you know, I mean, if, if they sell it, we approved it for horses. Maybe somebody's buying it, wants to, see if we can keep horses, we could go ahead, but other than that, I mean, if we keep it restricted to that, I'd, I'd always apply. Yeah, I don't, I don't see that we can keep it restricted to the Horcelson family.
One last question I have, and I know you had stated something about this before, manure.
Right. We have Marty Farms to take it, and we have a couple of...
Dives?
Yeah. We're gonna bring it to City Hall. It actually gets closer, you know. Between, uh, between Mike's and then Mike's brother-in-law Luke has some pretty big fields, and he would like it, too. So, and actually, it's, it's something that those guys want, you know, believe it or not.
No.
So, you know, but we have a good, we would have a good, um, waste management plan. And also, you know, if anybody says, has any concerns about flies or anything like that, we also have in place with Bob and Luke Band, you know, to, just to make sure that, you know, if you keep everything picked up, you will never have that problem, so, but just if there's anything that anybody's concerned about, that we've got that plan in place, too, so...
Have you thought about, or do you have kind of a plan as to how you're gonna access that area back there?
Right, just right along the side of our shop.
To the east or to the west?
Yeah, to the east of the shop.
To the east of the shop.
We put up, the building that we want to put up would be back on the angle and be more towards Woodward, that's the higher ground, and, uh, you know, easily accessed that way, because I plan on adding more gravel on my parking lot anyway, because that's where I'll park some stuff every once in a while. Keep it off, you know, turn it from grass to a little bit of gravel. I still like a lot of yard, and I love to mow, but, you know. But, just creating, like, if you can, if you look at the picture of the shop on the east side, uh, we can, we can come down there and we probably put a building in more on Woodward side, you know, kind of in line, a picture in it, kind of in line with the, the east side of the shop, but back into the egg part, those little waves, you know, not all the way to the back, but something to where we're gonna need power, you know, too, so we gotta have lanes.
From the attorney's letter, she's recommending a survey and split of the lot. I guess I missed...
Of his total lot.
Yeah, and that's what she's recommending, and just coming from a legal standpoint, I bet, you know, will that become a hindrance for him to be able to do that, because mortgage is probably tied to the whole thing? So, what is your thought to actually splitting the property per the recommendation of the attorney? So that, you know, your house is on one lot, and now you got another lot which is just, uh... I recently just went through that, and my bank said, sure, pay us off on the other one if you can have it in their own name. Because they don't like, you know, most banks don't like to spare land.
Because we have to, probably have to do a little more looking into that, that's a good point.
I mean, it's hard to sell the property without having easements and other things, so if you're ever gonna do something, there's more legal things that would have to take place, but...
Right.
I'm just going by what our attorney is recommending at that point. And do we need to follow that, or do we just allow it to go through without actually splitting it, which then doesn't give you as much control over just that piece, it becomes the whole, the whole property? Because you're rezoning the whole property?
Just the back.
Just the back?
Just what was surveyed is what's gonna be rezoned.
So you could rezone a portion of the property?
That's, that was the, that was the condition.
Right, but I'm saying, okay.
Yeah.
Because it's not rezoning an entire lot, it's just rezoning a portion of it?
Right. That's why the survey had to split it.
And the survey was more for just so we, the knowledge of where things were to be placed, so there's no encroachment one way or the other.
Yeah, I'm just not reading it that way in her, her recommendation, so...
I don't, I'm not aware of any other properties in the city that have got split zones.
No.
I guess that would be a decision that you'd have to come to a conclusion on, I mean... I would do that. Don't want us to spend any more money doing something like that, but, I mean, that's just the way that is. But if that were to be required, that'd be something that you'd be willing to, to...
What I can say is that this is a recommendation of the council. Prior to the council meeting, maybe we can get a legal opinion on as to whether that's allowed with, yeah, split zones.
Yeah, I, this will not be a council meeting on Wednesday. I'll work through your recommendations with the attorney for the following council meeting.
Question I have is, if waste management does become an issue, how does that get corrected? Say you sell the property, I mean, whoever takes the, afterwards, if, if there's an issue with...
I have a great movement flutter.
Well, and that part of the one horse per acre is, that, I mean, that, so, he doesn't technically probably have to get rid of anything because he's meeting, he's just saying, this is what I'm gonna do with it, you know?
Right.
So...
Responsible.
Yeah. He's going to mother and be on, but, you know...
You have any more comments or questions, I want a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to accept the, the conditional use permit. I don't have a list of other things.
You've got better boys.
I do, I can't read your answer.
With the following conditional use...
Thank you.
Conditions. Fence to be kept, maintained, quality...
Permanency.
Permanency.
Yeah.
Security, building within the egg boundary, manure maintenance responsible management, and limit one horse per acre. That should cover it. Just one complation. What if horses are no longer kept? Which conditional use permit expired?
Well, if it's not used for horseless for 12 months, then the planning commission can pull the public hearing to revoke the conditional permit.
Further on, don't worry. In all conditional use, we don't have to put the condition in there, if this conditional permit is not acted on in the next 12 months, automatically retired?
No, that is in your ordinance.
With that said, do we have a motion, any other comments? We'll look for a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I believe you're all set. Good luck with the horses. We had one more item you wanted us to discuss this evening, Teresa?
Yes, so we do, we do have another. I had the folks with St. John's and the daycare facility reach out to me, creations kids, regarding the way that they are planning their program for the future. So I did pull their conditional use permit. The conditional use permit is for a childcare facility serving 13 or more persons. And the condition is that if they expand beyond 40 students per day, they need to visit the planning commission, which the city attorney takes to mean that they just need to update you on what it is that they are planning to. So they're here. Will that be decided? Okay.
Marla Baum, address Neiman, address...
Please, if you would.
Marla Baum, 22441700 Street, KFAN.
I'm Rachel Limbo, 25167723, hey, Jill.
So I'm here on behalf of St. John's as part of the church council. Rachel's here on behalf of the actual preschool program at St. John's, and she's on that board, and, which has been for, what, already the 20th year, they just had 20th year celebration, but they are in outreach and admission of St. John's and have been for 20 years. So, with that said, this probably should have been revisited a while ago, I'm really glad she pulled this up, because we have not been able to even find this. New information for me. Uh, but they, so we have probably had times over the 20 years where there has been more than 40 kids, I'm just gonna put that out there. Currently, this year, they would not have been in that situation, but they are, they do have, this quotes a four-year-old, or four-year-old program, they have had a three-year-old program and a bridge program, which is kind of that year between, yeah, pre-K between four-year-olds and kindergarten, if you need that extra year. So we had, they, those programs have existed for several years now. What they're hoping to do next year is to expand to before and after care with that preschool program, and that is in light of the huge childcare crisis that is in all communities, but we, we know here we're experiencing that. So, they felt like there was a huge need, they've worked really, really diligently in trying to get this to, to come into, you know, come into action here, and they had a really good response. So, they do have children enrolled for preschool year next year, they do have several sets going before and after currently, so I hope this all works out. But, yeah, I guess you wanted to update them on the numbers that you're, where you're at and what we're hoping to do.
So currently, we have about 43 to 44 children right now registered for preschool classes. We have a program that's a before and after care program, so that the children who are not currently in class can have daycare needs. We have up to 37 on that, but that would not be in addition to. So, right now, we're just over that 40 mark that's listed in that document. Our goal would be, at minimum, before the school year would be closer to 60 in total for future, so if this grows, say, into 2020, we would potentially have up to 100 spots for the preschool programming. But again, it's a little hard to say they would not all be there at one time, because there's two classes going at one time, so something between 40 and 60 children at one given time. And again, that would be more into the, hopefully, 2020 to 2021, something like that.
So what are you currently licensed for?
Eighty, is what the current licensing has been, eighty for quite a while, they have not met that, yeah. And that's, that licensing, it's eighty onsite at one time, so, you know, like, we, just like home, too, we're licensed for 120 onsite at one time. We have 180 kids enrolled, because there's part-time, or there's only, you know, there's Monday, Tuesday, and somebody else is working Thursday, Friday. So, in terms of total families, it might be a little bit different than that.
Okay.
But onsite at one time, the way the current licensing stands would be eighty. There is potential to grow that, but that's, we gotta, we gotta get there first, so...
So then the state has determined that the facility can accommodate that many children at one time, and then you provide enough for that.
Correct, I mean, that's the standard, yeah.
And it covers the age range that you've talked about?
Correct.
Yeah.
Is there any other information the planning commissioner would want us to know?
No, I, you know, as I see it, the state is determining just us, whether we need to add additional conditions on this, and I, I don't see that there's a need currently, as long as we're, we're following state standards.
I guess my only other thought would be, too, is what you would suggest for future, so if we do get to that point or something changes, or we do grow, there's, would we just come back?
Right, so, so right now you have a license for eighty at one time.
If the licensing were ever to change?
Right.
That would mean we'd have...
Then you should come back and, yeah, keep looking forward.
That seems like a reasonable expectation.
Thank you, ladies, I appreciate you coming. I assume you don't need any action from us in response?
No, no, no action.
Thank you.
Action was on their part.
Thank you.
To redo that.
Anything else you'd like us to discuss this evening, Teresa?
Um, not to discuss, just to let you know that I do have a rezone application for consideration at your next meeting, we'll get that appropriately published and...
And were we gonna sneak in other, was there a planning and zoning workshop or something?
You have, like, coming up next week, yes. Yes, you're on your own, I will not be with you. Linda will be there, and Laura will be there to work with you.
I will apologize in advance, my cousin from Syracuse is driving from New York to meet up with her husband's family in the cities. I may or may not make it, I will try.
Okay.
That will be, uh, public work?
Uh, public work, Linda will make sure it's open, Laura will be there.
June 19th.
That's nice.
That's it.
Laura sent out an agenda.
Not yet, we'll bugger, we'll bugger her before then.
Please, and thank you.
Okay.
If there's nothing else, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thanks, gentlemen.